So I think we are now. Ready to start.
Great. Would you go over the procedures of what people need to do here?
Yes, again, I apologize, apologize for the issues. Just, just a reminder that this is an electronic meeting, live streaming. City Commissioners will be doing full roll call vote. We will have the ability for attendees to provide public comment, both during our normal public comment period, as well as during, during each agenda item. The mayor will define that period. I'll go over procedures for how individuals can make public comment if they're not a, a full participant in the meeting. Other than that, we'll try and keep the agenda to our normal process. For Commissioners, use the raise hand feature to be recognized. I think that's it. Oh, for those that wish to use closed captions, those are available on our YouTube stream. If you click the live on custom streaming service, if you're on the Zoom meeting, that will take you to our YouTube stream where you can see closed captions if you need that. I believe that's all, Mr. Mayor.
One last, one quick question for you, Andrew. On my screen, I'm showing a phone. Is that Commissioner Burr? Is he on by phone only, or do we know who that is?
Not sure. Three one seven six oh seven four eight three five, I believe, is one of our representatives from TWG Development. Who's here.
Right, right.
Yes, correct. This is Tyler Knox.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Let's, may, can we do the pledge allegiance, please?
Yes, give me one second.
All right, pledge allegiance. To the flag. United States.
To the republic. To the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Indivisible. Liberty. Justice.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the invocation, and I have asked Vice Mayor Good to provide that to us tonight. Vice Mayor Good, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. We hear from Matthew in chapter twenty-two. That the second greatest commandment is to love thy neighbor as thyself. As we conduct our business tonight, let us think of our community as our neighbors. We also ask that you bless all those frontline workers and keep them safe from harm. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Roll call, Ken. Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Present.
Commissioner Burr. Commissioner Klinger. Commissioner Wiki.
Here.
Commissioner Malone.
Here.
Commissioner Littman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Good.
Here.
Mayor Heil.
Here, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the proclamations and presentations portion. They're seeing there's none listed. We will move to the visitors section. Is there anybody in our audience tonight that would like to bring something to the Commission that is not on our agenda?
As a reminder, for those people that wish to make a public comment that have joined us by the Zoom meeting, please use the raise your hand feature in order to be recognized. I will then give you the ability to make your public comment to the mayor and the Commission. I see no one raising their hand, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew, and I noticed that Commissioner Klinger has joined our meeting.
Evening, sorry, some wireless issues. Thanks.
Okay, at this point, I will take the approval of the agenda, please. A motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
You have a motion to approve the agenda in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr. Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. I will, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will move.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
To approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yeah.
Commissioner Burr. Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes, thank you. The next item is our unfinished business. There is seen none. We will move down to the new business section. The first item on our agenda is a COVID nineteen update. City Manager Mike Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I have a few items, just to provide some information and a couple of discussion items as well. Firstly, as you know, we were working on a COVID nineteen preparedness and response plan. I sent you a draft. We finalized that. I'll go ahead and send a final copy of that to you. Most were simply minor changes. But basically, it's a protocol procedures for hygiene sanitation, how to handle if an employee is exposed or they're off sick, and procedures for how they would come back to work. So we've completed that task. Another item that I share with you, but for the public, we had applied for FEMA public assistance, and there was a deadline of April thirtieth, and really, that just makes us eligible to be able to apply for reimbursement for emergency-related expenses. So I don't know if we'll get any funding for that, but we're set up to be able to do that. We have been looking at events, both downtown and, as you know, working with the Chamber of Commerce and rescheduling Sturgis Fest. One of the other items that we've been discussing is fireworks. So normally, we have fireworks at the end of Sturgis Fest. Now, when Sturgis Fest moved, we were at least considering if it made sense to have fireworks, and that would have been June twenty-seventh. Some communities are canceling fireworks altogether. I would say, for the most part, communities are kind of taking a wait, wait-and-see approach. So we can, we could have fireworks on June twenty-seventh. We actually reached out to our fireworks contractor and explored the idea of July third. Because I thought it might make more sense with July fourth fireworks. However, there, those dates are already booked, July third and July fourth are already reserved. Another thought that we had was to move it with Sturgis Fest. That's going to be held in August. But I, I wanted to at least get some feedback from the Commission and your thoughts. We have not, we don't have a contract for fireworks, something we should, we should probably take care of soon, but we haven't purchased them. If for some reason, we're not, you know, let's say we scheduled fireworks in August and they can't happen, then I'm told that the fireworks would still be good for the following year. So with that, I thought I might see if you have any of your own thoughts and ideas on what to do with fireworks.
About next year.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think first and foremost, we should have fireworks in the city of Sturgis at some point. Secondly, perhaps as a celebration of the lifting of an executive order from a governor. If New York plans on having a ticker tape parade when Cuomo lifts his restrictions, perhaps we can have fireworks when Whitmer lifts her restrictions. Just a thought. But nonetheless, I believe perhaps at the end of Sturgis Fest is a good alternative, and I don't think we should cancel fireworks altogether. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiki.
I, I like the idea of having it around July fourth time. You know, if, if the third or fourth doesn't work, then we can try the day or two after, a day or two before. A lot of communities can't have it right on, you know, the third or fourth. So just another way to celebrate our country and, and to know that Sturgis is in on that, and it makes sense to me.
Thank you. Mike, this, I got you. Mike, do you know if we have it, if we have it at the end of Sturgis Fest in August? Is that date open for those, that group?
Well, we have some other conflicts, so I don't think we'd be able to have it at the end of Sturgis Fest, and we've talked to Kathy about that. So we'd have to look at some other day that made sense. We thought maybe even Family Night would make sense, which we traditionally have on a Wednesday. I don't wanna, I don't know that we can just lock in, in this conversation because we need to make sure that schedule is clear. And not only with the fireworks contractor, but with other things that we have to consider. But if I, I mean, if I knew there was a preference to have it during Sturgis Fest, we could probably work that out. You know, the other, the other reason that some communities are considering canceling, and I'm not necessarily endorsing this, but most of the funds that we receive for the fireworks are community-raised. And so the reason why, you know, they're canceling is because they, they either think it's a poor time to try to do fundraising, or they're concerned that they will be able to kind of achieve their previous fundraising goals. I'm not sure, I, I don't, you know, I guess have an answer for that. We, we get pretty good support on the community and fireworks. Whether that will change with everything going on, I don't know.
Commissioner Mullins.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but I don't see the raise hand option on my screen anymore. So I'm not sure what's going on there. That's why I yelled at you. Apology.
Commissioner Mullins, just, you have to open the participants tab, and then at the very bottom of that screen should be the raise hand feature. It might have gotten.
Gotcha.
Moved off when we went to fullscreen.
All right, thank you. I'm, I didn't, I couldn't figure out how to get back to it. Yeah, Mike Hughes, you said something to the effect of if we do go into a contract with the fireworks company, that it would still be good for the following year if we did not do those this year? Is that correct?
When we go into contract, they order the fireworks. So my question to them is, in some worst-case scenario, if, if we can't have fireworks, then are the fireworks still good for the next year? And they've told me yes.
Okay, well, I'm in agreeance that I, I think right around the Independence Day is the proper time to do it, and I think that you can actually do that, even if we do have the social distancing thing with most people probably around cars or whatever, you know, if we restrict people from, you know, maybe just sitting in their cars to watch it or whatever. But I think it's really important to have them, and hopefully, the fundraising thing won't be an issue for us.
Thank you. Any other comments, either on the fireworks or on Mike's report for the COVID?
Well, I have more on COVID.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm hearing is generally to try to do something around July fourth. We'll try to get the best date available and go from there, I guess. I guess I, I should mention that the chamber's theme for Sturgis Fest is United We Stand. So I don't think that, I mean, as an example, if, if we're under some executive order that doesn't allow us to gather like that, then it wouldn't be inconsistent with Sturgis Fest and the theme. So what I'm hearing is to target something around July fourth.
I, I agree with that. Around the fourth somewhere.
Okay. All right, very good. I think I have some direction on fireworks. I also just wanted to share that, and, and I did provide information to you, we did provide a temporary layoff notice to part-time employees, and these are part-time employees that are not working and are prevented from working under the current executive order. So we provided that notification on the sixteenth that was effective on the fourteenth. Related to that, I am working with city departments on developing a furlough reduced hour staffing plan in the event that the executive order is extended and is at least similar in its conditions. So right now, we have probably about less than ten employees that, by virtue of the type of position that they have, are unable to work. And so we've been trying to give them work. They may be, you know, most have worked some, but they're not working forty-hour work week. And my proposed plan is to implement some type of furlough reduced hours effective May first, if after April thirtieth the EO is extended. And so I just kind of want to talk about that with you, see if you have any questions. And I guess at this point, I'll open it up.
Vice Mayor Good. You're, you have raised hand.
I, I put my hand up at the fireworks thing. We're done with that, so, sorry. Is it still up?
It is down now. Commissioner, Commissioner Mullins, you have your hand raised.
I too raised it on the fireworks thing. Sorry about that. I, I just, if I can ask one question on that, we're talking about fundraising being used to pay for the fireworks and that kind of stuff. What is the overall cost for the fireworks generally run?
Fifteen thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And depending on how fundraising goes, our cost is under five thousand. The actual city's cost.
John, Vice Mayor Good, you, your hand is back up again.
Yeah, well, as long as we started on that fundraising thing, perhaps, just a thought. If fundraising does become a problem, just at least passing the hat at the fireworks celebration may help, you know, at least derive some funds out of that.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Michael on the furloughing of city employees?
I, I should say that it's, it's kind of a challenge to really make a, we can't really make a decision right now, particularly because we just don't know what the EO will be. I did hear a read in the Detroit News today that sounds like the governor may issue an extension of the EO. It is unclear to me if there'd be any modifications. They're calling it a short-term extension, and that may come out on Friday. But my intention would be that if, if we can bring back an employee and they can work, we would not be furloughing or reducing hours. If they're unable to work under whatever the EO looks like, then effective May first, we would be doing that. As I, I think I said, as we went through, it looked like, it looks like today that's impacting less than ten employees. We also have employees that we've chosen to stagger shifts to keep them apart. So we have, we've broken them up into teams. Some are not working, some are working. We do that to limit, you know, their exposure and infecting each other. Those employees, because we're selecting to stagger, would not be laid off. And that's really primarily the line department, Public Works, and the diesel plant. And we have a sort of a modified version of that happening at the race.
Commissioner Littman.
Is this furlough involving the virus situation? As far as money? Or what, what's the result of the furlough?
Well, the, the furlough or reduced hours would mean that the employee would be eligible to submit an unemployment claim. And there are different rules right now for unemployment. So we're a reimbursing employer, and it appears, although we do have some conflicting information, but it appears that we won't be required to reimburse under these conditions. And then there's an additional six hundred dollar payment per week. It's a federal payment. And so I would say that unemployment benefits are enhanced right now, and they've changed a lot of the requirement, requirements making. I, I think providing more eligibility.
I was just wanting.
These are employees that can't, that, that cannot work, even though we're a critical infrastructure employer. They're the types of positions that in the, in the EO would be referred to as nonessential, and they're not, they're not able to work. Some of the, if they can work remotely, that's okay, but not all positions lend to being able to work remotely.
Was that EO as a result from Lansing?
It's the executive order from the governor, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Skip. Do you have any more? Michael?
Mr. Mayor, I see Commissioner Mullins has his hand raised.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Mullins.
He's muted.
Commissioner Mullins is muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. Mike, you had mentioned the reimbursing employer line there, and I was just looking for that email because I wasn't, I didn't quite understand it. But it sounds to me like what you're saying is that because of this coronavirus, the executive order, that kind of stuff, we would not have to reimburse any of the costs for the unemployment.
That's, that's our understanding, and that's the language that's in her unemployment EO. Frankly, though, we do have some conflicting information that we might have to pay fifty percent of it. But normally, we pay a hundred percent of that cost. So there's no real, in, in, in normal, like, non-COVID times, there's no real financial benefit to furloughing or temporary laying somebody off, because we end up incurring that entire expense. So when someone is temporarily laid off or furloughed, we would still maintain their health insurance, their benefits, but they just wouldn't be paid for the hours that they're work, working. If their hours are reduced, then they would file an unemployment claim based on those hours that they're, they did not work.
Do, do you find that advantageous for you as a city manager in, in making it easier to, to lay off or furlough workers then? Or is that not necessarily your mindset?
I, I think it's both. I think that it's advantageous for the city because we save money for people that, if we don't do that, that, that we would be incurring that expense. And honestly, I like the idea that we're laying people off and they get an unemployment.
I read that, and I thought it sounded too good to be true, but apparently it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Anything else, Michael, on your report?
No, sir.
Okay, I do want to let everyone know that Commissioner Burr is now with us. If you look at your screen, he is on the screen. Thank you for your report, Michael. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda is the M sixty-six traffic signal upgrades. Barry Cox.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'll try to, try to be as loud as I can. So M dot is in the process of designing signal upgrades along M sixty-six, and it includes four intersections. West Street, South Street, and Fawn River are in the first group. And over a two-year period, they're going to be replacing the style of support poles that support the signals, upgrading traffic or pedestrian crossing stuff as the, as the signal lights themselves. And then Wenzel is actually the fourth intersection, and it's in a second group, which is about six months behind the others. But they would all be upgraded in the next two years. And what they do as, as far as standard upgrades that don't affect anything for the city involves, these lights will have intelligent transportation system and connected vehicle enhancements. They're going to change all of these intersections from diagonal span support to a box span strain pole support of traffic signals. These signals will have cameras to indicate when the phases change. They will have backplates on the signal heads, which is a safety improvement to better show up, have the, the heads show up. And as I mentioned, we're going to have upgraded pedestrian signals. The box span strain pole is basically everything you see on US twelve right now in every intersection. So that's what it would be if we didn't consider what we're looking at City Commission considering. So M dot provides the opportunity for local governments to upgrade some design elements of each of these projects. And that includes the biggest thing being the changing out of these box span strain poles to mast arm support of the traffic signals. You can also paint the mast arms if you so desire, and you can also have backlit LED street name sign. And I've included several figures or in the packet in regards to what that, what those might look like. But any of the upgrades that we select, the city would be at the city's cost to have them implemented and maintained in the future. So with that, I guess, if you have any questions regarding this project, I'd be glad to try to answer those at this time.
Okay. I have lost my view of the people, the Commissioners' raised hand. Thank you, Andrew. Commissioner Good. Vice Mayor Good. Vice Mayor is muted, Jeff.
All right. Question for Barry Cox. Do we need to do all four intersections in the same way? Utilizing the box or utilizing the mast or utilizing the painted mast or utilize? Is there an opportunity for us to choose one intersection and put a mast and lighted signs at that intersection and allow the other three intersections to stay as a box support?
So Commissioner Good, the answer to that is we can pick and choose if, if you so desire. If you have a consensus on an intersection that you would like to upgrade and what you would like to do for the cost of those upgrades.
Okay, thank you, Barry. I, I'd like to speak to that issue just a little bit. When we spoke about this previously, it was my opinion that we should consider the mast installation. I know it costs money. I know it's a, not a free deal. Nothing's free anymore. But the thing is, I believe that the mast is more aesthetically pleasing, and I believe it provides for a more clear depiction of the intersection at which you have arrived. As a, a part of my profession, I'm all over everywhere. I've found that in Branch County, they're nice enough to put the crossroad signs at each intersection, no matter where you are in the county. In St. Joseph County, they do it on. In St. Joseph County, they do it on major thoroughfares, but not um throughout the county. At any rate, um I would like to see us choose South Street as an opportunity to do the mast installation. Now I've looked at the city budget for 19 and 20. And I've looked at the fund balances in the street funds. Uh, the major street fund is uh projecting a fund balance of just over a million dollars. And if we did one intersection at 73,599 at the most expensive end of the engineer's estimate, I don't think we would be disturbing that fund balance by a great amount. And we would be providing the citizens with a much more aesthetic intersection than all the wires uh that are included in a box support system because those wires come from each corner out to the traffic signals. In addition to that, you would provide for a lighted sign showing that it's South Street and it's South Centerville Road. Those local people know that quite well. But those that are coming into our community from the south off of the toll road don't know that. And uh, of course, if we could do Fawn River as well, uh they, those travelers could be even more impressed with uh our progressive stance, but that's uh there's an issue there with that Fawn River Road being a county road and crossing a state highway. So uh utilization of our street funds is probably at question there. But if we could pick uh South Street and uh do that with the uh masks and then allow the others to be uh the ones that the state tells us are quote free unquote. Um, then I think we've uh, we've done two things. We've made the uh city appear a lot better out in our uh major commercial area. And we've uh we'll see what those things are like at that point. And then later on, we might choose to do even more. So uh that's the way I feel about it. I think that if we make some decision tonight, we should uh include that decision to have uh the intersection at South and Centerville be masts and the others to uh remain box style. That's all I'd like to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um I have three other people here and one of them is the city manager. Mi- Mike, do you want to address what John was talking about?
Yeah, I just wanted to um correct myself. I, I did uh talk with Barry and 25% and Barry, you can make sure I'm correct, but 25% of the Fawn River Road, South Center intersection is our responsibility.
25% is?
Yes.
Um, yes, that's true. From the lighting, you know, for signal costs uh for maintenance and things of that uh nature, we pay 25% of, of those maintenance costs at that signal right now. The county pays 25% and then MDOT pays the, the other half.
So on that, on the figure, if we use what Vice Mayor said, 73,599, we'd only pay 25% of that, Barry?
Uh, no. Uh, you're, these numbers are the, the MDOT's not, not going to participate in any upgrade costs to mast arms. These are, are 100% our cost scenarios here.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Mullins.
You're muted, Jeff.
Man, this is so hard, man. I like being in the room. Okay, well, question Barry, number one, if I can get back to my screen here. In the second paragraph, it talks, it talks about intelligent transportation and all that stuff, which is great. I think that's really, really cool stuff that they're going to be doing at no cost to us anyway. I think all those things are really cool. Um, down in third paragraph, we talk about the uh upgrades. And there's, the line says that the city can upgrade the mast arm pole category to avoid biennial, biennial, biennial inspection required for lighter grade steel mast arms. It says something about lighter grade steel mast arms. The only things I see in that, in this uh graph or any of the photos are painted or unpainted. Would we have to? Are those uh painted or unpainted? Either one, the grade of steel that we would uh that would be appropriate for us not to maintain?
Uh, Commissioner Mullins on page two, which breaks down the costs for the mast arm. You'll see that it was identified to go with the category one mast arms.
Yep.
Category ones do not have the biennial inspections. And I really didn't basically provide that as an option. I, I just didn't make any sense for us to, I, I didn't feel to consider having that additional maintenance expense going forward. So this, that's why the category one is, is listed as a selected item.
Okay, so, so what you have listed um is the grade steel that we, that would not require the inspections, whether it's painted or unpainted?
That is correct. And, and I believe any of the three categories of mast arms could be painted.
Okay, all right. Well, that was where my confusion lie and uh thank you for clearing that up. Um, another I guess that anything else, there, there's only one question that I have before I make a comment to you, to the board was about the MDOT were requesting a consent to grade in front of City Hall as part of the project. What, what is, what is that? What are they speaking of there?
Okay, so when MDOT works beyond their public right of way or beyond the city right of way on a city street, let's say West Street right of way, they are required by the way that they operate to get proper acknowledgement or acceptance for them to do work on that property. For the current preliminary design that I have seen, they were going to need to remove some of the sidewalks surrounding the current pedestrian signal that sits out there on a foundation to be able to upgrade that foundation and put a new foundation in and put the new post in and then repour that concrete as part of the sidewalk at the intersection.
Ah, okay. That's uh seems pretty elementary to me. Thank you very much. Uh, I, I just wanted to make a comment about the, this whole um light the inner intersection stuff here. Um, in my opinion, I don't know that there's a need for mast arms at any of our intersections, number one. Um, I know that Vice Mayor Good had just mentioned maybe doing it at one, but I think that if we don't do it for you know, all of them on that major throwaway, what's the point in doing one? And looking at the total cost here, we're looking at uh if we were to do all of the intersections, it'd be well in excess of you know, uh a quarter million dollars. I think that that money could be well spent other, in other places where we might have a better uh return on our investment for, for the money we're spending. Um, I was talking with the city manager Hughes Monday morning about one of the uh things that I'm, I'm curious about was the water extension down to the state line. Once the prism has their solar farm in and we need to extend water down there for any commercial outfits that might come out there. I don't know how we move monies around or what we can or can't do. But I think that at this point in time, spending this kind of money on something that's unnecessary, they're going to be upgrading these things already, MDOT is, and doing all of the really cool stuff, which is the intelligent transportation system. The, they're changing these spans from diagonal to box, which I understand, and they've got these cameras in the back plates and all this kind of good stuff. Why do we want to uh put ourselves at, at uh any more uh monetary risk right at this point in time, especially what we're looking at with this COVID thing, not knowing where we're going to have to pay extra money and additional money for other things. Um, when they're, when they're going to be coming in here doing the work already, I see no sense in us spending additional money on any of the intersections. With that, I digress. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
I was just thinking about the different intersections uh in our city. And uh there's only three intersections that make sense to me as far as wanting to upgrade for aesthetic reasons. And that's the two intersections that are downtown, uh Clay Street and Ottawa. And those aren't even mentioned, uh but the other one would be between City Hall and the auditorium. Um, it just seems like uh for what we're trying to do uh in, in making our town look nice, those three intersections, if we were going to target any to upgrade, uh that's where I would uh put my money. Um, just wanted to give my opinion on that one.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Burr.
Yes, I would just like to concur with Commissioner Mullins. Uh, number one, this is not a budgeted item. We have no money in it specifically for that unless we rob something else. Um, considering the COVID situation, we don't know what the future is going to bring for us. And I think that since MDOT is going to be doing it on their dime, uh the city doesn't, doesn't need to expend a quarter of a million dollars into something just to make an aesthetic when I'm pretty sure most of the residents of the city aren't going to notice the difference or much care for the difference. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Claire.
Yeah, uh, it's uh just a third echo between Commissioner Burr and Commissioner Mullins. Um, you know, uh continuity and aesthetic, you know, change is important to me and having the entire commercial strip would be great. But unfortunately, we only get one out of all those options right now. Um, you know, and also to echo what Commissioner Wiki said, yes, uh our other uh primary interest in uh gentrifying uh is downtown and we're uh limited on our options for mass changes there. So uh until we have uh a further and brighter outlook um on the budget and where it allows us later on, um I definitely agree that we can hold off on any sort of updates and uh upgrades as far as these masks go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the commissioner comments for Barry on this issue? From the commission? Seeing none, is there any, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Whitten?
I would concur with the others as far as uh what the discussion was.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Good, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Good. I get this right yet, John?
All right, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I, I'd like to caution everyone from throwing around the quarter million dollar figure. One intersection is not a quarter million dollars. One intersection is 65 to 73. So if you're worried about spending a quarter of a million, um, that's wrong. If you're worried about spending 65 to 73, then um that's a different story. I believe that it would be I like Commissioner Wiki's thought that uh West and Ottawa be chosen. I don't mind that one at all being a mast. Um, it certainly would make that uh intersection look better. It's out in front of our City Hall, our District Library, our Center for the Arts and uh the Sturgis uh Education Commons. So you know, that intersection would be as a good choice as well. Um, I knew that I would uh hear from the rest of the commission on not spending the additional money to uh upgrade those corners. And uh I just want to um be on record as saying that I believe it would be a good thing for the city of Sturgis to have more aesthetic intersections than what we have now. Uh, if we chose one at West and Ottawa, that's a good choice. If we chose one at South and Centerville, that would be a good choice. But uh it would be in my opinion, that it's much like, I guess I'll buy that paint, which is only $5 a gallon and paint my house so I can paint it three more times in the next 10 years. Uh, you know, if you don't, uh, if you're not willing to uh progress, then you're just going to continue to uh build up that fund balance and uh remember that uh it is a, a fund budget that we work with. The major street fund, the local street fund, the um cemetery fund, they're all individual funds and they all have fund balances. They all have budgets. To say that you're going to make a payment and move money around, I think Holly might be able to tell you more about what can and can't be done. But uh we also have a street and sidewalk improvement fund. Um, all of those, uh, if you look at your budget, the local street uh fund has a $796,000 fund balance. We're talking $65,000, maybe 73 at the top end. Um, if we do an unpainted mast with uh a backplate signal heads or if we do a backlit street name, um, I think we'll come in under that $73,000 figure. If I'm not mistaken, Barry likes to give us a little bit heavier figures so that we're not surprised if they do come in uh at a different number. But uh nonetheless, uh, I think it's uh it would be a nice gesture. Uh, maybe we don't want to make a gesture to our community that uh we want to make it look better. Maybe we want to let them know that uh we're saving every dime we can because something bad's going to happen. Uh, that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Burr.
Yes, in response to the question, 63,000, 73,000 as opposed to nothing, I still say it's worth saving that much money. It's not going to create that much of an aesthetic difference to the community. I have, I get a lot of phone calls uh reversing my thoughts. I will have uh further discussions about it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do, I do want to just be clear about something. Um, and, and John kind of mentioned it, touched on it briefly. Um, you can just do the category one mast arm. Some of these things could be added at a later date. If you wanted to add LED street name signs, you have options down to six feet. They can be long as 10 feet. That's why the ranging cost. Uh, these costs came directly from MDOT's engineer. Uh, I did not affect them at all at this point. But you could do theoretically, if you wanted to just do a painted mast arm intersection without any overhead LED street name signs, you could be in for $50,000.
Barry, is there a specific date that we have to make a decision on this?
Uh, sadly, Mayor, uh, today would be good.
No pressure.
No pressure on this.
The only one that probably doesn't have to be decided on this evening is Wenzel because it's a little further behind, but it doesn't sound like there's a lot of direction to try to do Wenzel right now. And the, the design for Wenzel is, is really problematic uh for MDOT right now to do it as a a kind of the standard style, this, this box span strain pole, just because of the layout of the driveways and intersection as a whole. But uh they, yeah, the they really kind of need to know what our direction is, maybe even, maybe not for all four of them, but we didn't really talk about not deciding all four of them at one time uh with them. But if there's one in particular you want to consider a little further, we might be able to do that. I will say uh the discussions about having mast arms at West Street may have a reevaluation by shipo of that intersection beyond their initial intersection review because of the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts being on one of the corners. But that didn't necessarily mean it was going to be, it wasn't, it couldn't happen. It just that it may take a little longer.
Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we put a mast arm uh at the intersection of West Street and Ottawa Street.
You have a motion? Do I have support for that motion? I'll come back to the other hands that are raised. So just, I just want to get through the motion. Hang on just a second. Vice Mayor?
Well, I would support the motion.
Okay, so let's, go ahead.
But I would like to have a little more clarification. Do we want a uh class one uh mast arm to avoid the biennial expense, uh inspections, category one? Do we want it unpainted? Do we want it no signs on it? Do we want it unpainted? Do we want no signs on it? Street signs? Do we want lighted signs on it? If, if I were to support a motion, I'd like to see it to at least be category one, unpainted, no street signs.
Let's make it that.
I would support that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Mullins, before I ask for this thing. You're muted, Jeff.
I was just going to ask the question whether this was requiring a motion tonight. Barry answered the question and I never lowered my hand, so.
Okay. Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, just a question for Barry. He had said that it would, that it would take a little longer due to extra inspections. Is that, is that some sort of cost that would incur on our end at all? Or, I mean, just because of the auditorium?
The State Historical Preservation Office did a review of the intersection based on utilizing the standard box band string pole support system. They found no negative impact due to that. However, if we were to request the intersection be the four mast arms for the four different corners, then there would be an additional review by the State Historical Preservation Office. To my knowledge, that would not cost us any money. But, and I was not told specifically, it wasn't going to, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a no-go. That would be, remain to be seen, I guess.
I see. So there's potential that it could in fact not qualify for whatever reason?
It is possible, but unless you go down that path, we won't know for sure one way or the other.
Absolutely understand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions here for Barry from the commission? What I'd like to do is ask Mr. Rose if he would read the motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, before, before we go through.
I'm not going to vote. I want to, I want to have him read the motion before I ask you to ask the public.
Okay, thank you.
So that way they know what the motion is, okay?
Okay, so Commissioner Wiki or Commissioner Good, Vice Mayor Good, please let me know if this isn't correct. I don't think it's word for word. But move to approve the installation of an unpainted mast arm street signal with no street sign at the intersection of Nottawa and West Streets.
That's correct.
Just category one would be the category one mast.
Andrew, would you see if there's anybody in attendance that is listening to us who, that they have a question or comment on this?
Sure. Once again, for those joining us as attendees in the Zoom meeting, if you would like to make a public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And I will recognize you for public comment. I see no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. We have a motion in front of us for, to put a mast arm on the street out here by Commissioner Wiki and second by Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Good. Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Lippman? Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone?
No.
Commissioner Burr?
No.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins?
No.
Commissioner Klinger?
No.
Mayor Heil?
No.
Two nay votes, two yay votes, six nay votes, motion, it does not carry.
All right. One other question for Barry on this. Barry, how often do they come, does MDOT come up with an offer like this?
I, when they redid US-12 through the downtown and upgraded all the signals from diagonal span to, to the strain pole back in 'oh-six, I don't, I'm not in the position that I was in at that point in time, so I don't know that there was an offer made to do this. I don't know that they were really using mast arms at that point in time. So this, this is considered an upgrade to the strain pole layout by MDOT. But how long, often they need to change this stuff out, it could be decades. I really don't have any idea on how long graphic signal layouts typically survive.
Okay, can we go, if we decide later down the road to go back to, to go to MDOT, say, hey, we want to upgrade our mast poles, will they help us work through that?
I think the benefit to the, the pricing structure as it is right now is because they're in design. For us to basically reconfigure the whole intersection, you're not going to be able to do it for sixty to seventy thousand dollars. It's a different foundation for mast arms than it is for the strain poles. It's a bigger diameter. It has to be able to support that load on the arm that sits out over the roadway. So it's basically, we would have to go in and rebuild the entire intersection traffic signal setup.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Moving to the next item on our agenda is the Pleasant Avenue reconstruction. Barry?
Thank you. So before you this evening, we have an MDOT contract for the Pleasant Avenue Reconstruction Project. It's document twenty-dash-fifty-seventy-seven. We have to do a contract with MDOT for each we do. This one's for TAP, for Transportation Alternatives Program Grant in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Our share, when it was originally programmed, was, I believe, five-seventy-seven, three-seventy, including any construction engineering, materials testing, inspection services, or additional work. So there's a, included in your packet is a resolution to approve the contract with MDOT and designating the agents to sign the document. In this particular instance, we actually received, or MDOT, I should say, received project bids on April the third. We're a little late on getting this contract to you. So we actually have what the bidder's amount was for the low bidder, and that was from Northern Construction Services Corporation out of Niles in the amount of one-million-one-hundred-sixty-thousand-five-sixty-nine-and-fifty cents, which is a slight reduction from the original estimate by the engineer of a million-one-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand dollars. So this evening, we have several things. We have the motion for the contract. We have, in addition to that, we have the professional services proposal and agreement from Fishback for construction inspection oversight. And then we have a motion for contingency budget of five percent on the project, which is about sixty thousand dollars. And then, I believe at the end of this whole thing, I'm going to turn it over to Holly regarding a budget amendment to move forward with this as well. So however you would like to structure this, Mayor, please do so, and I'll be happy to try to answer any other questions.
I think I'm going to have Holly come in and explain the amendment. And then I'll open it up to commission comments. Holly?
Okay, I'm going to unmute. Yep, so basically, included in the, in the budget this year for the Pleasant Street project, we had budgeted a net, a net to the Fund 201 Street Repair Budget of three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars. And we need to, in the, in the back of the budget on page forty-four, in the capital plan, there was a slightly higher number there, but, but regardless whether you look at that one or the other one, the net cost in the Fund 201 for the Pleasant Street project is going to be four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars after Barry and I spent quite a bit of time today working on that. And it really has to do with the fact of, you know, taking the total cost of the project, breaking it down by the different funds that are going to be impacted by that. And then, you know, all of the grant money essentially hits the road, kind of with Commissioner Good, what he was referring to, hits the road budget for the grant. And then part of, but part of the total project costs were also spent, part of it was spent last year in design, which was budgeted. So basically, in a nutshell, we, we need to increase the, the budget in Fund 201 to reflect the budgeted dollars necessary to do the project in Fund 201 for, for the road part of the project by a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, so that the net budget in 201 for the Pleasant Street project reflects four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars for this project. So that includes the combined cost of the construction. It also includes the contingency of sixty thousand dollars and takes into consideration what we had spent last year for design. There's a little bit more in design that will also be spent in this current budget. So I hope, sorry, I don't have the handout in front of you. That's a lot of numbers thrown around, so I apologize for that. I didn't know.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Holly, you mentioned that we're going to amend the budget by one-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars to accommodate the increase in cost. At the current time, 201 Street Repair Fund indicates a potential balance at nine-thirty of 2020 to be a hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. And if we redo, if we alter that, that's going to make that twenty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-six dollars as a fund balance?
Well, actually, you would, you would typically, yes, be seeing that. However, yeah, it'll be a little bit higher, but essentially you're, you're thinking, right, we're going to have not a lot left at the end of 2020 in this, in this fund. That's correct. The other, you know, we have a pretty large budgeted expenditure there. Currently, that, the funds budgeted include the East Geraldine Street project, which we don't have. You know, that, that budgeted line item there on page nine of your budget is one-point-one-eight, one-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand for that project, plus some engineering. So, you know, that's a pretty hefty line item there. We don't have, that project isn't out for bid yet, so. But yeah, we're going to have a little bit, you know, down to about forty thousand left in that fund at the end of this fiscal year. So that fund balance is not too healthy.
Yeah, so I just bring that up based on what happened previously.
Any other comments from the commission? Seeing no hands waving in front of me here. Andrew, would you see if there's any comments from our attendees that are listening to this program?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Once again, for any attendees joining us via the Zoom meeting, if you wish to make a comment on this agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And I will acknowledge you for public comment. Wait just a second. I see no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. I do have some, a couple more raised hands by the commission. Commissioner Mullins?
Oh, thank you. Holly, could you, could you repeat what you said at the beginning of all that? You were talking about the street funds projects and the, and the capital expenditures? We had four-oh-eight-two-fifty. But.
Commissioner Mullins, if you look at page forty-four in your budget there, there's a line, there's a, under Pleasant Street there, it says four-oh-eight-two-fifty.
Right.
Okay, but if you look at page nine,
Right.
At the bottom, it says Pleasant Avenue Construction, and there's a, an estimated cost and an estimated grant with a net of three-eleven.
Right, yep.
But really, that three-eleven should have been four-oh-eight-two-fifty. But now, but now it needs to be four-twenty-eight-hundred.
So.
Estimates that came in right at the end and it didn't get carried through. I mean, the good news on that page is that the grant was initially going to be four-fifty-five, and it's actually six-twenty-one-seven-thirty. So our net is a little higher, but our grant also is higher.
Okay, so to correct things, then, I guess, if I'm looking at it on page nine, you're looking at the three-eleven, the three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, which is the net with, with, or the local. Should that be four, what, what, what should that be?
That should be four-twenty-eight-hundred.
Four-twenty-eight-hundred?
Yes.
As should the. As should, should it be on page forty-four, should be the same?
Yes. Yeah, yes, and technically, yeah. Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Barry?
Yes.
You have a raised hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I need to finish off one little additional portion for discussion in regards to this. During the course of design of the project and getting it to MDOT for bidding, one of the items that was not included in MDOT bid but was originally envisioned as part of the streetscaping charrette and, and design options was over-the-street string lighting and the associated poles to support that lighting. This product element was not put into the bid letting, the advertising for it, and MDOT would not allow for amendment to include it before the, the bid letting occurred. And so we're going to, we're going to put it out there as a bulletin or anticipate, looking to put it out there as a bulletin to, as an additional cost of work, which is estimated at forty-one thousand dollars.
Commissioner Mullins?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. One other question on there was, if I'm looking at all these funds where it's coming from, street, electric, wastewater and water, all of those are budgeted in 2020, with the exception of the electric for the one-hundred-thousand dollars for street lighting, that's in fiscal year 2021. Is that going to need to be moved, or is that lighting not going to be done until 2021? Is that correct?
It'll be moved.
Okay. Do we need to make any kind of action to make that move?
No, but I, I was looking at my electric, you know, we've moved a lot of things around in the Electric Capital page this year. I was thinking, maybe I need to give you an updated, updated one, but yeah, it would need to be moved over. The 2020. You're welcome.
Thank you, Holly and Jeff. Commissioner Burr?
Yes, since the the string lighting and the poles aren't included in the, in the cost, and it's going to be a extra bullet or whatever, are we going to go ahead and put in the, the wiring for that? So down the line, we can add those later. Is that part of the cost, or would that cost us extra to have them put extra electrical for those poles?
The pole locations for the string light poles are in a different location than the streetlight poles along the, the gathering area, I guess, is the best way to put it. You're, if you're going to put in, you'd have to put in the foundations for the poles. You'd almost have to do like what we did on North Street, which is, you know, they put the big silver barrels almost over the top of the, the foundations. And the, none of the electrical to run to that is, is included right now. So I guess I, you know, I guess it's an option, we could go back and look and explore with the contractor to do that. But I kind of am viewing it as more of an all or nothing, this particular item.
Barry, and Commissioner Burr, correct me if I misunderstood your question, but, but I believe that Barry, that extra work would still take place as part of this project. It's just going to be bid separately if the commission chooses to move forward. Is that correct?
Well, there's a process within, within the contract that allows for bulletins, and this, basically, it's a bulletin for additional work. We could request the contractor, who hasn't really seen this, to supply us additional information. But his cost would be to do this, and then they would supply. and then they would supply an actual cost back as opposed to just the engineer's estimate to do this additional work in the streetscape area. So that's how it would work and it is not part of the one million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we currently have as a construction budget or cost.
Vice Mayor, good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um the forty-one thousand dollars for the uh over the, the street string lighting and associated poles um would be added to the one-two-five number, a million two oh one five sixty-nine fifty-four, whatever figure that Northern uh would come up with for that cost. Uh I would like to ask uh Holly Kaiser if that amount, uh whether it be forty-one thousand or whatever Northern comes up with, um would uh impact page nine um and uh the four oh eight twenty or whatever it was. Would that, would that also come out of that same street repair fund or would that come from the electric fund because it's uh over the street lighting?
I believe we were gonna include, that's included in the um, the electric fund over the street lighting. It would not impact page nine.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
Yeah, my concern was that if, if there's gonna be a conduit ran with the electrical that uh we should, you know, it should be part of, done at the same time as the um, as a whole project and I have to cut it in later.
I like that's the plan.
Sounds like it.
Your Honor, your honor?
Yes.
Um, that is the plan. So in, in essence, the bulletin is like a change order. We would ask Northern for a price for the uh string lighting and pole. We'll give that to us and then we decide if we proceed.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, any other comments from the commission or questions? We have three motions in front of us. I will take. Someone would like to make a motion.
Your Honor, this is Commissioner Burr. I move that the Sturgis City Commission adopt the resolution to approve M dot contract twenty dash five zero seven seven and designate agents to sign contract documents.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Burr. Was it Commissioner, did you second it?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh to approve this motion, uh roll call, please.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Um again, we have a second motion.
It doesn't need to be recorded.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, good.
I'd move the Sturgis City Commission approve the professional services agreement with Fishback for construction engineering services in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred dollars as presented and authorize city manager Michael Hughes to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor, good, and a second by uh Commissioner Klinger. Uh roll call, please.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Mullins. Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Mr. Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. And we have one more last proposed motion.
Your Honor, this is Commissioner Burr. I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a contingency budget for the Pleasant Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of sixty thousand dollars as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burr and a second by Commissioner Klinger uh for the contingency budget. Um roll call, please.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Thank you all.
Your Honor, could we also add a motion to amend the uh Fund 201 budget to decrease the expenditures by a one hundred and nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the Avenue Construction Project?
Will someone make us, make a motion what uh the uh Holly just had?
Mr. Mayor. All right.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yeah, so, so moved it in the language that Holly did. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad support.
All support.
Um. You wanna reread the motion, Miss uh Ken, by chance?
Or Holly?
Repeat it.
Yeah, Holly, tell me if this uh works to uh move to approve a budget amendment for Fund 201 expenditures for the Pleasant Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars as presented.
Sure.
Thank you, Holly. Um I have a motion by Commissioner Klinger and to support, and support by Commissioner Mullins, all in favor, uh excuse me, roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman. Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is the Saint Joseph County Drain Commission easement. Barry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Um so the Saint Joseph County Drain Commission's office received a petition to do dr- uh improvements uh down at the south end of town, uh specifically around the area uh of Treatment Plant Road, Wade Road area where we have flooding that occurs at uh the Affordable Tool Rental Facility. So the uh, a board of determination meeting was held in December of two thousand eighteen. They considered the project necessity and it was approved. And so they've been uh moving forward with design of this project in the area. Thank you, A- Andrew. That's going to be basically south of Fawn River Road and west of M sixty-six to hopefully alleviate the flooding issue during heavy downpours. Uh, the design of the project utilizes several private properties to direct the drain, the water, runoff water into the Nide Rain south of the wastewater treatment plant, including uh City of Sturgis Properties. So the Drain Commissioner's Office is requesting two easements from the city. One that's being highlighted on your screen, that's the former railroad right of way up to M sixty-six and down to Wade Road. For basically constructioning a deeper ditch along the western side of that gravel driveway. And then once they get to Treatment Plant Road and Wade Road, they will go under the road and go through the middle of that uh property on the south side of Wade Road. Uh and create a ditch there over to the headworks ditch at the beginning of the treatment plant. Um and that, that connection will then extend around on the treatment plant property down to the actual Nide Rain. And so the second easement is to extend a branch of the Nide up the, to the beginning of the ditch at the treatment plant. Uh future maintenance of this ditch would then be handled by the Drain Commissioner's Office under a future maintenance petition and those costs of the maintenance would be shared by the benefiting properties within the district itself. So they are looking for two easements to construct this project. One over the treatment plant, plant's property, which really they're not doing any real work on there except at the very, very north end. And then the, the primary easement is for the area along the abandoned road, railroad right of way north of Treatment Plant Road.
Thank you, Barry. Uh Vice Mayor, good.
Yeah, two questions for Barry Cox. Uh first, uh future maintenance by benefiting um property owners, is the city is, they're just a benefiting property owner?
We are likely going to be apportioned in this improvement for costs associated with this project. So I would suspect that uh unless there's some significant surface changes, we would be a future benefiting party or future maintenance.
So you use the term apportioned, uh I can uh equate that with uh will be receiving special assessment from the Drain Commission.
Yes, we, we will be receiving a cost associated with his project. They, the Drain Commissioner is trying to keep this to be as low a cost project as he can. None of the participants, the properties are, are where the development of the drain is going to be, are receiving any kind of monies for said easements as part of this. Um but yes, we will pay a portion.
So the easement is gratuitous and the cost is assessed to us related to the properties and our benefit. Do, have we seen the formula for that benefit? Have we seen an estimated cost of the project?
I've seen a design of the project. I have not seen an estimated cost. I don't think, Mike, have you seen an estimated cost for this project? I don't think we have.
We, we've not seen an um total estimate of the, of the project. There have been some numbers thrown around, but I don't think they're I, I don't think they're really like numbers that are other than just discussion. I will say, I mean, I think it's in our benefit to actually provide these easements and extend the branch because in the future Drain Commission will be maintaining it and then we'll just be paying a portion of that. So my, my thought was if other people are gonna use it, then they should be paying for it. And in this system, um other people, whoever is benefiting in theory is paying um a part of the maintenance.
Thank you. Any other questions either for Barry and maybe Michael on this issue? Seeing none at this time. Andrew, would you see if there's anybody in our audience that has a question?
Sure. Once again, for those attending via Zoom meeting, um if you would like to make a public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. I'll give just a second to allow them to acknowledge themselves. I see no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Um you know, I'll ask again, any other, any other comments or questions on this issue? If not, what say the commission?
Your Honor, I'd move that the Sturgis City Commission approve the easements for the Nide Rain Project as presented and authorize um city manager Mike Hughes to sign the easement documents.
Support from Commissioner Burr.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um I have a motion by uh Commissioner Mullins and support by Commissioner uh Burr uh on this, on the night, on the uh Drain Commission easements. Uh roll call, please.
Mr. Vice Mayor, good.
Barry Cox has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barry. Go ahead.
Sorry, after the motion.
After the motion? All right. Okay, Ken.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Okay, Barry.
I, I just wanna get uh coordinated with Mike to get these uh documents signed tomorrow as soon as we can for both this and the M dot contract. So that was it. Thank you.
Okay, let's virtual sign it. That'd be great.
All right, thank you. Uh the next motion, the next item on our agenda is the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation. I will take a motion to suspend this meeting so we can go into the uh Housing Development Corporation meeting.
So.
Do I have support?
All support.
And was that you, Jeff?
Yes, it was.
Thank you, sir. Um I have a motion by Mr., by Vice Mayor, good, support by Commissioner Mullins.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes, can I ask a question real quick, though?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Uh just real quick, do we need to close this screen out and, and then re-up or can we just leave this one open as well, Andrew?
Uh no, this is, this is just a continuation of, and, and it will be a second open meeting, so we're gonna, we're gonna stay in this Zoom meeting for the Housing Development Corporation.
Okay, so we should not close the screen down, then?
That, that is correct.
Yes, right, thank you. I said yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha. Uh Commissioner Wiki.
You're muted, sir.
Commissioner Wiki, you're muted.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation. We have one new business item. Purchase agreement for ARC Rights. Andrew, could you give us a brief introduction?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh this is a purchase of ARC Rights property, which is owned by the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation for sale to TWG Development. Um this again is two hundred East Chicago Road, the former ARC Rights property um for sale for uh the Monroe Lofts project. We do have a representative of TWG Development here tonight, uh Tyler Knox. Uh he's on via phone. For the purchase agreement that was included in your packet, uh negotiated price of the property is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh fifteen thousand dollars due as earnest money. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on the purchase agreement. Um and Tyler here, of course, is to answer any questions you may have going forward as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Vice Mayor, good.
Sure. Um, closing date and closing documents, aren't these uh contingent, I, this is a question from Tyler Knox. Uh aren't these contingents upon the award by Mista to uh TWG for the project?
Uh yes, you are correct. They are contingent on the award of tax credits.
So the, the closing would not occur nor the sale occurs if in fact Mista did not award the tax credits.
Correct.
And if the tax credits are awarded, the closing date will occur forty-five days following that?
Um so the closing, so the, we would have a um, a period of time between the, our uh the, the date of the tax credits that we get awarded and the um, there's like about a, I, I forget, Andrew, how many days was between the award and the end of the closing period. Um but I think it was, it was more than forty-five days. I think there was an extension or two in there as well.
Yeah, there's, there's an option for an extension. Also, the, the day, the inspection period is extended out to Also, the, the day, the inspection period is extended out to October 31st, 2020 to allow for that award to take place. So they have, they have some time after the presumed award before, before they would, we would go through closing.
So in essence, the actual closing may not occur until sometime in October.
That's correct.
Yes.
And then we would not be looking at, or would we be looking at some form of construction within the 2020 year?
No, so we would, no, it would probably be very early spring of 2021.
All right. Thank you very much.
I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any questions from directors? If not, is there a motion that any director would like to make?
Mr. President, I move that the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation approved the purchase agreement with TWG Sturgis LP as presented and authorized President Mike Hughes to sign all the necessary documents.
I support that. Sounded as Director Good supported. At this point, maybe we should see if there are any public comments.
Sure. So any public comments? Once again, same procedure as before, use the raise hand feature in order to be recognized for public comment. I see no public comments, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, all in favor of the motion? Well, I guess we're doing roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Director Wiki.
Yes.
Director Burr.
Yes.
Director Klinger.
Yes.
Director Mullins.
Yes.
Director Lippman.
Yes.
Director Malone.
Yes.
Director Good.
Yes.
Director Heil.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes. It appears we have an approved purchase agreement. There's no other business. I will adjourn the meeting of the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation.
Thank you. I will take a motion to go back into our normal commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. We are back in our normal commission meeting. We are down to the item of our Commissioner's staff comments. Let's start, if I can do this right, with staff. Public Safety Director, do you have some comments for us?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. We're still just plugging away.
Thank you. Yeah. Howie.
Yes. I don't have anything further. Sorry for not having a handout.
All right, thank you, Howie. We have both city attorneys on our, on the screen tonight. I will start with Eric. Any comments? Eric's muted.
Yeah, there we go. No, nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. And Roger, you still in Florida?
Still in Florida and no comment other than the fact I'm about 20 yards away from a large pond and a gator just floated by, but he kept going.
Thank you, sir. Ken.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Andrew, and again, I will also, again, thank you for making this thing work. Comments?
Sure, nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Manager.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll start with our Commissioners. Commissioner Burr.
I, I do have a question. Is Barry still in the office there?
It looks like Barry signed off.
Oh, okay. Maybe, maybe Mike can answer this. Is, do we have any idea when South Centerville Road is going to be paved?
That is a well timed question, Commissioner Burr. So I received an email, I believe yesterday, and, and I hope I'm quoting it correctly, there, it was an, an email from MDOT that said they're working on their capital plan and that they are targeting some type of resurfacing for South Centerville, North Ottawa, and then Chicago Road. And I, and I could get this wrong, but I think it was from Lakeview East and they were targeting 2026 or 2027.
Wow.
They wanted to ask us about, this is like an initial planning meeting to get some thoughts on utilities. And so that's a long time because that road is in, in bad shape. But this is the first time I heard that it was in, in a plan. I do have a draft email update that I was going to plug that in and send it out. So I'll have hopefully the best information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Commissioner Burr?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wiki.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Klinger.
I don't feel like South Centerville Road will last that long. He, just kidding. Thanks. I just glad everything's going well. Unfortunately, it's cloudy tonight, otherwise I would suggest the meteor shower to everybody. The leery meteor shower is supposed to be peaking tonight and tomorrow night, so maybe chance tomorrow. But other than that, stay home, stay well, things could change any day. We have an update Friday.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Malone.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullins.
Oh, yeah, I've been real bored at home, so I got lots of stuff. Good news. Number one from Mr. Mr. Burr down there in Florida, he was talking about at the beginning of the meeting about having the hand raised. He said he saw a finger raised. I'm wondering if that was from the alligators. But anyway, Andrew, I want to say thanks to you and staff and whoever has any part in putting these things together because you guys make these things go off nearly flawlessly and, and it's most appreciated. I also wanted to mention something about the Planning Commission. I'm not sure who does those. I don't know if it's Kara or if it's you help or who does that in there, but ours are so much easier to follow along than the Planning Commission's packets are. And I just wanted to say thank you for that, if that is you and the Planning Commission is not you. And if it is not you, maybe you might be able to get some hints to the Planning Commissioner Packet Presenter. So thank you for that. The other thing I had was about, speaking of the agendas and that kind of stuff, is there anywhere online where, where people that are attending these meetings might be able to go to get the packets themselves? I mean, the, the meats and the meat and potatoes of the packet with all of the attachments and things? And I guess if not, is that something that I'm allowed to share on Fridays with others if, if need be?
Thank you.
Mike, do you want to handle that one or?
I mean, is the, is the pack, so could we allow, put the packet? I mean, it's, it is public information and we could put the entirety of the package online. So it is, it is definitely something that you can share.
Okay, all right, well, that was all I needed to know. I know it's not available. All, all that's there is just that front page of the packet and what's on it, the agenda basically, and it doesn't give any specific information. So I was asked about that and if I might be able to share that in the future, I may with, with, with some others. Yes. And, and the other thing is about the minutes. Is there a timeframe when those need to be posted? Because I was in there today looking on the website and I noticed from 2019 they're there, but not in 2020 that I could find is?
I don't have a specific timeframe. I update those periodically, so I can get those updated. That's not a problem.
Okay, I just, just a couple of things there that I was just asked about and I, I looked myself and saw that 2019 was there, but we're into April and there's nothing from 2020 yet posted. I just didn't know if there was a, you know, something in the charter that said it needed to be posted within a week or a month or whatever.
They, they need to be completed and they're approved at this meeting in terms of posting it and putting them online. I don't know that there's any requirement for that, but it's certainly good practice to do.
Okay, but they're available.
Yeah, oh, sure, absolutely, they're available.
All right, and one more thing, when I was just searching through, like I said, I was bored, so I was looking through old agendas and things, and I noticed on March 13th, we had, we appointed Rick Mailer to the vacancy on the Planning Commission up until May 2020. And I'm wondering is, is, has, has that been posted for any, for a new member or is the Commission, because this is a, a Commission appointed, I'm guessing, are we going to reappoint him or appoint someone else at that point? And has it been advertised and have you had any?
So we've been advertising just throughout the year for things that we don't, as usual, we don't have a lot of applications, but that usually is our second meeting in May. So I've been looking at that, getting that prepared to contact all of the current members that, or positions will expire and then we'll be, as we have in Facebook and, oh, I'd say we've done it a few times this year for specific positions. We'll reach out and try to see how many applications we can get. So at second meeting in May, you can anticipate that we will be doing reappointments and appointments.
All right, very cool. And last but not least, I want to thank city staff, Mike, Julie, Julie especially for setting it up for me. I was, I don't know how many other Commissioners did, but there was an invite for all of us to attend any webinars that are online for elected officials. And they were labeled for newly elected officials, but it's a great refresher course and I found a lot of good things in there. The first one is on our roles and responsibilities and the freedom of information. And one of the main points out of that thing that I really took that I think that I should stress to everybody had, if you did not do that, is to not let favoritism and bias cloud your decision making. That was really, really crucial to me on that one. The third one was the Meetings Act, which was really cool. You know, I learned a lot of stuff there, but the one that I was most interested in was the municipal finance and it had the top 10 tips for elected officials. And I learned a heck of a lot from that thing and I don't know if anybody else took part in those things. I hope you did. And if not, I encourage you to do those in the future because even old dogs can learn new tricks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Lippman.
On a little lighter side, I'd like to know what the heck happened to the Easter Bunny because it was 29 degrees and snowing a couple of times this week and I've had just about enough. So.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. After tonight's meeting, I find it interesting that we're willing to deplete the Road Repair Fund to a balance of $19,946, but not willing to reduce the fund balance in the major street fund to $946,524. Also, I'd like to let you all know that the Sturgis Neighborhood Program applied for and received the Payroll Protection Program grant, so they are covered for the next two months by the federal government's Payroll Protection Program. So locally, one of our own received a Payroll Protection Program grant and Monica and Barb will receive their pay and they will receive their health benefits. So that's all good. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I have just a couple of things. Mike reminded me that because of our loss of Mark DeVorek, he was on the hot, excuse me, the ambulance board and I have contacted and talked to Commissioner Malone. I have, and asked her if she would finish out his term and she has, has agreed to that, do that for us. So Commissioner Malone will be our ambulance board representative. And the other thing I had is, and I think it's more of a safety issue, if any of you gone down north Lakeview at the corner of Lafayette there, there is just up the street, there's an apartment complex and there's a lot of cars parked in that lane. I know that lane is not a bicycle lane, but it's intended to be a bicycle lane. It's not marked. My fear is that we're going to have, somebody's going to get seriously injured or we may have a loss of life there because on a bicycle, when a bicyclist has to pull out in, in, into traffic to get around the cars, and I've been counting those cars, and on the average is roughly eight to nine cars there during the day and at night it's probably about 12 to 13 cars. So a bicyclist or somebody out there can just pull right out in front of traffic and someone's going to get hit. We also have across the street, the Wall School with its parking lot and also the baseball fields there. I would like to ask if city staff could come up with some type of way to make that a little bit more safer. I do believe there are parking spaces for all the tenants in that park, in that apartment complex. And it is, as I've talked to Michael a little about it, people look for the convenient way to do things and they're parked in there so they can run right into their apartment and that's it. Well, I look at it, if there's a parking spot provided for me, they should be using it. So I don't know if anybody else wants to make a comment, another Commissioner would like to make a comment on that. But I would like to see if my request would be city staff to take a look at this, maybe contact the apartments and find out how they treat their tenants with the, with their parking spots in the back.
I agree with the mayor. Skip.
And I know, I know Commissioner Lippman would see the same thing because we drive down that road constantly.
I see it every day.
And the car, and there's quite a few cars there, too.
I think there ought to be a 15 minute limit on the parking there, if any at all. It's not for overnight, shouldn't be.
I, I, I think that you're going to find a problem with enforcement if you try to put a time limit on it. You can talk to the Public Safety Director about that, but I don't think that you're going to, you're going to find real success with, with all that because they've got other things to do. I think you either need to look at eliminating parking altogether or just letting it go as is. My vote would just be let it go as is. I mean, it's like that on every city street. And it's like that on the south side as well of, of Lafayette as well. I'm not sure what the problem is there on that north side that's different from the south side of it, but I don't see a difference there. I think it's fine the way it is.
Public Safety Director, do you have any comments in it?
I would just echo what Commissioner Mullin said about the whole time limit thing doesn't work. It would be more of just eliminating parking from that side of the street also, and that would be in coordination with the city engineer.
Sounds good.
All right, is there anybody, is, is, can we have the staff call the apartment complex? Or Jeff, can you call that apartment complex, complex and find out what their, what their, why people are doing that when a spot's provided in the back?
Well, I can, Your Honor, but it's legal parking spaces, so people can choose to park, I mean, wherever they want, as long as they're in a legal parking zone.
Okay. All right, that, that's just my concern is I, I think it's a safety issue there with that, with, with more and more people are using, riding bicycles down through that direction. And I'm just afraid someone's either going to get hurt or someone's going to get killed down through there. And I don't want to really wait that long in order to, to make changes for that purpose. That's all I have to say. Now, Andrew.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm unclear, are we?
I, I don't think you.
City staff directed to look at this or not?
I, I just, I mean, I think the Public Safety Director says it's public parking.
Yeah.
I guess then there's not going to be any, I, I'm not going to, if there's no other support to do it, I'm not going to waste city time, staff time to do this.
Okay.
I believe there is a, a safety issue here. Want to wait till someone gets hurt or killed on it to make a change? So be it.
Are you looking for support, additional support?
To, to direct the, to, to direct staff to take a look into this? Yeah.
I, I support, I support that. I think that if there is parking available, they should be using that. And if you need to put a no parking along that side of the road, then so be it. They can either cross the street or they can park out back.
Okay. I guess the question I'll say is do we have consensus to do this, to allow staff to look at this?
By my, maybe, and I've had my hand up here for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like, I would like to echo Commissioner Mullin's thoughts that it might best be left the way it is. First of all, you're making a rather large assumption that all of the cars that are parked there belong to people that live in those parks. Now, it seems logical that they would be, but you're making that assumption and you are attempting to say that we don't want any. And you are attempting to say that we don't want any public parking on that street. Because all of those apartments should have parking spaces for those cars. Um, you know, if you wanted to travel all the community's uh, streets. You would find that there is a tremendous amount of on-street parking that takes place everywhere. Um, the South Maple Street and the one hundred block, I can guarantee you there's seven cars down the street. Me right now, there's probably two of them right out in front of my house, along with that other seven. Uh, you're gonna uh, ask staff to eliminate parking. In front of a multi-unit complex based on the fact that you don't like to see the cars parked there. And that perhaps it's a safety issue. Um, if the people are crossing the street to Wall School, they're doing it um, for a reason. But I don't think the people that are parking there, if your assumption that they are residents of those. They're not, they're going into their apartments from that side of the street. Now, there's always a chance that a child can dash out from in front of a car or an adult for that. Or a dog, or a cat. But that takes place on every street in the city of Sturgis that allows parking. If you're gonna sing, single that section out. Because you believe it's a safety issue, I think you need to go across every street in the city and say it's a safety issue. Uh, you're being rather selective based on the fact that you drive down that street all the time. I don't think it's uh, uh, necessary to eliminate that parking. And uh, so uh, I'm not gonna be one of consensus. To have our city staff draw up a traffic order to remove parking there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I guess we don't have consensus to do it, so we'll not uh, instruct city staff to uh, take a look at this issue. Uh, we, I will take a motion to go into closed session. To discuss you new, union negotiations and material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute. With motion to go into closed session.
Oh, moved. Mullins.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support, Commissioner Burr.
Most important session, it's by, by Commissioner Mullins and support by Commissioner Burr. Uh, before I ask roll call, Andrew, will you make sure you instruct us how to do this, what we need to do?
Sure. So um, you should have received an email earlier today. That uh, identified it as a new Zoom meeting for closed session. So what you will be doing is leaving this existing meeting. Um, using that email to go into closed session if you are uh, someone who is supposed to be in the closed session meeting. Um, that will, that will be its own separate meeting. Um, city manager will be the person that will be opening that meeting. I'll caution you, it, it works a little bit different than, than this meeting. It's a little bit more controlled to prevent some of the interference. You might have heard about in the news on Zoom meetings because it is a closed session. So there may be a period of time when the city manager has to authorize you to join the meeting. So if you're, if you get a, a little bit of a pause after you try to join. And it, it asks you to wait until you're, you're allowed in, uh, that's why. But uh, the city manager, I believe, is already left and, and moving forward with that process. Um, the, the open meeting will be left running along with the live stream for those that are, are watching via YouTube. And or participating via the Zoom meeting. Um, when the commissioners are done with closed session, uh, they, they will be coming back into open session to, to formally adjourn the meeting. So if you wish to stay, um, this, this session will remain live for you. But uh, for commissioners, that's the instructions. If there's any questions, you all have my cell phone number. If you're having issues getting in. Um, you all have my cell phone number.
Andrew, there. Andrew?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question? This is where I thought we were at before going into closed session. I'm sorry about that. You probably picked that. Um, if we leave, you, you said we're gonna have to come back to this meeting. We just leave this open?
No, you will, you will have to use the email, the, the email that you used to originally join this meeting to rejoin this meeting.
Okay, so we'll need to close out of this and then re-enter this once we're done with the closed session.
That's correct.
Okay. Cause I was just wondering if we can't keep it open because uh, we'd be then in openness still.
Yes, yeah, yeah. No, you don't wanna, you don't wanna leave it open and, and it probably will not allow you to be in two meetings at the same time. So.
Okay, I am leaving the meeting.
Hold on, don't, I get, we gotta vote.
Okay.
Gotta vote first.
Oh, you're right.
Okay, let's vote. Uh, Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good. Uh, Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
You may now leave the meeting.
Go here, okay?
They calling you in a minute there, Andrew.
All right.
I'm waiting.
Walk now.
Skip, you need to leave the meeting at the bottom. Click Leave Meeting.
I'm looking. Okay.
You got it or?
Well, let's see, I clicked the one at the bottom. Do I have to click another one?
Yeah, it should say, click, uh, it should say Leave Meeting. A red.
Yep.
Okay, he's gone. Roger, you're good. You can go. Roger, you're still there. Roger, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Andrew?
I don't know, but I'm gonna kick him out.
Okay, I'll see you later.
Oh, wait, hold on. I can't do that.
He's not muted.
I can put him on hold. He stopped his audio. Rod- Roger, if you can hear us, you need to leave the meeting. You're still in the meeting.
Bob, it's something weird's coming up when he clicks on his link. It says cancel. You're like, go to the page or something.
Okay, that's.
I'm in.
Okay. Give me a second.
Looks like Roger's eliminated his video and his audio, but something's still there. Roger, you're still there. I still see you. Okay, he's gone. Everybody's gone, Andrew. I'm, see you later.
We need one more for our form.
Yeah, and there's the man.
Hey, there we go.
And skip two, alright.
Need one more for form. Need one more for form, here we go.
Here you are.
There we go.
Where you going?
Okay, I think we're ready to go, Mr. Man.
We got everybody? Alrighty, are there any more comments for this meeting? If not, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.